So Steve.
Yeah.
Rich. Okay, I'll come back to Rich. Cory.
Yeah.
Diane. I'll come back to Diane. Let me go around Bill.
Yeah.
Zoe.
Here.
Julian.
Here.
Molly.
Here.
Jason here. Cory, I got you already, right?
I'm still here.
Okay, you're still there, good. Anne.
Here.
And I'm here too.
Okay, Diane's here. Bonnie.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Great. And coming back for Rich. Rich, are you there?
Yeah.
Okay. Sean, I know is not available tonight. I think that's it. Did I get everybody's seat? Okay, so again, I'll come back. I'll come back to Rich. So tonight, as I sort of mentioned in passing, is our reorganization meeting. Often, we have an election going into a reorganization meeting. We don't have an election tonight. So really, the order of business will be to look at the officers, or I guess they call the officers, right?
Sounds like Jimi Hendrix.
Yeah. That was good. Are we okay? Keep yourselves muted. So there are four roles on the list of officers for the school committee. I'll start with the first and then we'll go from there. So let me just have Rich announce that he's present. Rich, could you say you're present?
I am present.
Okay, great. So we have nine members present without Sean. And what we're doing is the reorganization meeting. So the first one that we're going through is the chair role. Do I have any nominations for chair?
I nominate Steve.
Point of order. Point of order. I thought the chair and the actual positions on the committee only change after election years.
We've been doing it every year for a while, not rich.
Yeah.
Okay. So you're ruling me out of order.
No, Peter's in charge. I have nothing to do with this. I'm just.
Okay.
I am reluctantly ruling you out of order. And I'm sorry. It hurts me more than you know.
Keep your enthusiasm.
Yeah. So going back to that. So and I think there were so many things going on at the same time. Three people said something. Can those people say it again? I. Okay, so nomination from Molly for Steve Bannon. Is there a second?
I second that.
And a second from Bill.
Yep.
Any other nominations? Okay, hearing, none. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Hi.
Oh, sorry, roll call. So again, I'll start with the people in the room. Bill.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Jason.
Yes.
Cory.
Yeah.
Anne.
Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
Anne. Diane.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Bonnie.
Yes.
Okay. Steve, did I get everybody?
Oh, you did.
Okay, all right. So now I will hand my imaginary gavel back to the chair and he can continue the rest of the meeting. And we'll go through the rest of this fairly quickly. As Rich said, it's not an election year. So the subcommittees will just make minor changes as people want. They don't have to explain what they are unless someone asks. So I need a motion for vice chair.
I make a motion that we have Rich to Molly continuing as vice chair.
Second.
So a motion by Bill, second by Molly. Is there any other nominations? Hearing, none. We'll go roll call vote. Anne.
Yes.
Jason.
Yes.
Sean. Is not here. Bonnie.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yeah.
Cory.
Yeah.
Rich.
Yes.
Yes. Well, you never know if he wants it. Assistant treasurer. Governor.
I nominate Cory.
Molly nominates Cory. Do I have a second? I'll second him. Any other nominations? Hearing, none. Roll call, Anne.
Yes.
Jason.
Yes.
Bonnie.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yeah.
Cory.
Yeah.
Rich.
Yes.
And yes, it's unanimous. So normally in May, we would go with treasurer and recorder. We apparently missed that this year, so we will do it now through May. This is on a different term. There's reason for that. I'm not sure what it is.
It's normally secretaries.
Through June.
June 30.
Oh, yeah, forgot to secretary. I'm sorry, thank you. So let's do the secretary first. Do you have a motion?
I nominate Diane Singer.
Second.
So a motion by Bill, a second by Molly. Any other nominations? Hearing, none. Again, a roll call. Anne.
Yes.
Jason.
Hi.
Bonnie.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yeah.
Cory.
Yeah.
Rich.
Yes.
And I vote aye, so it's unanimous. So as I said, through June 1st, is it sure?
Through June 30.
So June 30. So these are on the school year as opposed to the election cycle. So do you have a motion to appoint Richard Jettie as secretary through June 30th, 2022?
So I'm.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Roll call, vote. Sheriff, just because everyone looks puzzled. We, Richard came on many years ago as part of an auditor's recommendation. And it is appointed by the school committee, but I've only met him once. And how long he's never been here? It's a behind-the-scenes job.
Right, right. He reviews our work. He reviews journal entries, payroll, turnovers. He reviews all of the warrants in detail, the warrants that you sign. And he provides other treasury services. He is a retired CPA, so he's sort of my backup as well.
So that's a little better explanation than I should give. Roll call, vote. Anne.
Yes.
Jason.
Hi.
Bonnie.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yeah.
Cory.
Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
And yes, it's unanimous. And finally, as far as is the recorder, Christine Kelly. Again, a motion to appoint Christine Kelly through June 30th, 2022.
I nominate Christine Kelly.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion by Bill, a second by Molly. Roll call, vote. Anne.
Yes.
Jason.
Yes.
Bonnie.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yeah.
Cory.
Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
And I vote aye, so it's unanimous. So now. Yes.
Steve, hi, it's Christine. Hi, I just wanted to jump back. When you made your motion for the treasurer, you inadvertently said secretary.
Okay, so it is treasurer, I'm sorry. It is.
So can I just change that or do you have to amend it?
You can just change it. I think everyone knew my intention, but thank you.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Okay, that's all right.
Good thing we have you as a recorder.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. So I'll briefly go through each of the subcommittees. If we, anyone wants to make a change after I name the committee, just tell us. Sean's already said he wants to stay on the one that he's on. So let's start with negotiating subcommittee. Any changes?
I would like to nominate Cory Spring to meet the nomination.
We already have four. Can we have five? And it's not a nomination. It's a voluntary decision, as is the chair's choice.
Maybe the fifth has to be an alternate and comes if.
Well, the quorum is six.
Oh, this is negotiating. Yeah. I'm in the wrong.
Okay, good.
You're so excited.
So the way this works is it really is the appointment of the chair. But as long as I've been doing this, it's all volunteer. If you want to be on it, or if you want to get off of it, you know, you run your term. So negotiating will stay the same policy. And I'll read the names under that just for the people listening. It's myself, Cory, Sean, and Jason. Warrant subcommittee, chair, we still need that, right?
Yes. I may just bring them for approval here.
So there are five there for that answers the questions. Myself, Rich, Bill, Sean, and Bonnie.
And that should be this mirror the membership of the finance committee?
Yeah.
That is correct. I'm just looking now.
Yeah.
It is. Buildings and grounds, Jason, Bill, Molly, and Diane. So we can go up to five if anyone wants to join one of these. Superintendent Valuation and Advisory Subcommittee.
Anne, this is the one, right?
Do we want to?
I would like Cory.
I will add Cory to that one. Doesn't always have to be a democracy. Technology is myself, Rich, Sean, Cory, and Bonnie. Finance is Rich, myself, Bill, Sean, and Bonnie.
My name has an S on it for the finance committee. I don't think it's another field from Dalton.
We will correct that. District Consolidation and Sharing Subcommittee has not met in a while. It's myself, Rich, Molly, Anne, and Sean. School Center Inc., which we can only have three members, but it's myself, Jason, and Diane. And that will have probably a new name next year. There are some changes that we will explain. I don't hear anyone wanting to get off. So Fund for Excellence, Bill is the delegate, Diane is the alternate. The Vocational Advisory Board is myself, Molly, Jason, Cory, and Diane. And finally, the MASC representatives are Bill and Jason. I'll give everyone one more chance. Anyone else want to make any changes? Okay.
And just one thing maybe to mention now, seeing the MASC, we've not gone to that conference in quite some time. Particularly, it didn't make sense to go during the COVID. For next year, there's a summer one and like a fall one. One in November, that's the one. Right. So maybe we flag some people going, not in like a week, but a year from now.
This school district used to send eight to 10 school committee members every year for a long time. So it may be good to kind of get back to sending a few people.
Anne. I did.
About two years ago.
It's the first year.
But you can't get a lot of out of it. It's worth a lot of fun.
But nobody else.
In our next thing is our minutes. We have minutes of October 7th and October, October 1st. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion, we have six minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion by Anne, a second by Bill. Any corrections, solutions? So roll call, Anne.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Bonnie.
Aye.
Molly.
Aye.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yeah.
Cory.
Yeah.
Rich.
Yes.
And yes, it's unanimous for both sets of minutes. And let's go ahead with the superintendent's reform. So let's start with Katie. Then we'll go to Ben. Then we'll go quite deliberately to Zoe and Julian. And then Christie can add anything additionally.
Okay, so we've had just a couple of things going on in the U.S. We had a whole professional today caught all of the staff up to about the same point with the math habits and routines work. And we are in the middle of a math studio where teachers are seeing each other teach, in some cases, and presenter teaching others. So we're in a good place to move forward for the other two studio visits for the year. And our other big news is that we had our first of five community connection, Veterans Day celebrations today with third grade students hosting their special guests. The specialist team pivoted once again, so they pre-recorded all the other gradings. And the third grade did their part live, and they saw on a screen the other grades doing theirs just to make it a little bit safer. And the breakfast treat was in a very cute little to-go bag. Just, but it was nice to have people in the building and the kids having a chance to do something a little bit more normal. So that's our news.
Great. At the middle school, just chugging along, we finished the first quarter. It's not as a bigger thing, I think, as in the high school in terms of credit and all that. But it is a big thing. You know, we wrap up a lot of projects, and it's a really busy time of the school year, kind of four times a year. Very impressed with the fifth grade with their work on writing and reading for writing. So we use a program called Self-Regulated Strategy Development, SRSD. It's a very rigorous writing and reading for writing program. It's a really big shift in middle school. We moved from learning to read to reading to learn. It really supports all students, only making use also of our fifth academic period, if you call them what I need now, win, period. But it's great. Kids are doing independent reading, which they should be doing in school, but also then working on their writing, getting extra math information or math help. And it's when we also do a lot of our reading, math, and executive skill interventions. But it's just a real augmentation of learning and really helps all students in the major curriculum. Sixth grade had a fun activity last week with Halloween and our class students, which was a lot of fun, really some using that to highlight how we do community, trying just to make sure that kids really get a chance to engage with each other and appreciate each other, really just connect and have fun while we're also taking academics very seriously. And then we had a really big one, and we call Team Go, Team Green and Team Orange. We have the Team Go Cup Challenge. It's a little trophy that the teachers made, a little orange and a little green bobble head when they do healthy competitions. This one was actually scarecrows. And it was about 10 or 15 scarecrows made as a competition. Of course, the one of Mr. Doran on the bicycle won the show, which was great. So I was very happy to be there. But it's just, again, a lot of fun, a healthy competition, and really just building those connections between kids. We have a really cool trip coming up. The English-language learners are taking a trip up to Ramblwild. And Feronia, the parent corporation, which is a Class B corporation on sustainability, has given us a grant, so it's a completely free experience to go up to Ramblwild. It's really great in terms of just engagement for those kids. And really speaks to some of the things we do that are special, but also that will speak to kind of the inclusion. So a lot of our adults who are just new to the country, don't speak English and are trying to learn English quite quickly, we have them in a very strong inclusion program. And something I just learned is that we have several adults in our social skills classes both being mentors for older students and younger students, but also helps them engage in more appropriate social activities to learn the language. So it's a really nice way of enriching everybody while getting to our goals. And as Katie said, we have a really good TJ on Tuesday. We did some work around proficiencies with the physical partnership with the middle and high school. And I'm really proud, we have a new, one of our new coaches, Emily, and just Phil Warren, really just made proficiencies come alive for a lot of our staff. And then our teams work in the afternoon. Really appreciated the time to connect and collaborate. And lastly, just want to just say again, our process for getting students ready for student-led conferences in December, our instructional leads are really helping shepherd the process along and tune it up. And then the kids really have already done their reflections in classes on a piece of work and art practice learning, which then improve in the next couple of weeks. We're going to put together into a presentation for the families in December. So a lot going on with the middle school.
Great, thank you. So Zoe and Julian.
Awesome. So with the end of the quarter happening, as Mr. Doran mentioned, parent-teacher conferences happened last Tuesday. I think overall, they were a success. A lot of what worked went into them to make them virtual. I honestly think that aside from all the kinks and technology issues, having them virtual is a really, really good idea, even in a year that's not like this one, because it makes it just much more accessible in ways that working parents can sort of get an opportunity to meet with their teachers. That being only really five minutes long or 10 minutes long, and they can be difficult. Fall Fest is happening. It's a really exciting thing for a lot of students in our school because this is the first time that we're going to have that experience again, I believe, since COVID, but I might be wrong. But there's a buzz in the air, and a lot of people are excited. And there's a lot of hard work going into that.
Yeah, so we have Fall State tournaments coming up. I think girls soccer plays tomorrow. Boys soccer plays on Saturday. Volleyball is going to Nantucket. I'm sure lots of people have heard, so excited. Cross-country will run next Saturday for Western Mass. And there are going to be lots of spectators from our school going to support all of those games. And registration for winter sports has started, and those will start on November 29th. We're going to have swimming and wrestling for the first time since COVID, I believe. And yeah, so as far as student wellness goes, definitely, stress is an unsurprising continuing issue. It kind of peaked at the end of last week and this week with students taking PSATs and SATs, the end of quarter one, and early action and early decision college applications being due. But people definitely seem to be taking a little bit of a breath after that. And things are feeling a little bit lighter in the building already.
There's a lot of excitement. We're going to host our first pep rally next Friday. So in terms of school spirit and community, that's a really, really important one. Unfortunately, we can only have half the school at once, which is a real bummer. But obviously, a constraint that we have to work around with COVID.
So with that, we're going to hear from various sports teams and clubs. And also, I hear have a little impromptu performance from the Fall Fest group to promote their show.
Fine.
Yeah, and I think just one more comment to the group. I mean, mask wearing is sort of something that's becoming more hard and difficult as time goes on. So just, so from our perspective and daily life at school, it's becoming more evident that some sort of vaccine mandate is something that would help.
Nice segue. And we didn't even plan that, but we'll get to it in a little bit.
So I'll add just a few more things from the high school. Today at the high school, we started in our crew having students take the Panorama survey for social emotional learning. We are doing that across the district. And we're hoping to have at least 80% of our students take that so that we'll have some really good data to really act, particularly in the context of what we shared in terms of mental health and trying to get a sense of where students are and what we can do to better support them. I have a couple of exciting pieces of information that the virtue fund for excellence did support two projects that were submitted. One is from our English department. They requested funding to start classroom libraries to encourage more reading, which is very exciting. And then from our science department, there was a student-led request to do some work to bring back a science fair to monuments. So this year will be some preparation work for that, and then hopefully that'll watch next year. So those are two exciting things that are going on. We're also in the process of planning for a school visit. So as I've mentioned, in connection with the bar grant, we do actually get a lot of other resources in addition to the funding that they give us directly. And one of the opportunities they're providing us is to have a school visit where a team of folks from Spring Point are going to come and do school observations December 2nd. And in the context of that, they have a whole series of school indicators for school quality that they look at. And the two they're going to be really targeting in their visit with us are looking at our work in the context of rigorous and purposeful learning experiences and student support, specifically with the work for the ninth grade team that we're doing and the work around crew that we're doing, because they know that those are two big pieces of the grant funding. So I just wanted to highlight that we're in preparation for that.
Great, thanks much. What I want to do now is transition to a continued discussion of our grants. So last, and Sharon's going to hand out a piece of paper, and to the school committee members who are online, I sent this to you as an email, so you can check your email. And to the public, it'll be in our packet. But to catch people up, last week, we spent some time talking about the whole range of different grants we're getting. And then we ended the meeting by having school committee members share their thoughts and brainstorm. And it was, in some ways, a setup, because I knew many of the things that you came up with and shared would significantly overlap with some of our thinking. And lo and behold, in just about every case, that was true. So as you look at this document, particularly around ESTER III, in the left column there, there's things we called from your comments. And then we crosswalk them with things we're already recommending. And they're really parallel, right? So several of you spoke about how to just support our English-language learners. The district recommendation is the addition of the 1.5 ESL staff. Almost everybody's been talking about CTE or CTVE programming. And the district also supports that. In terms of supporting staff, we're thinking potentially of instructional coaches. And that's what I want to come back to, because you approved a role there. And I want to tell you about where we are in that process. Impacted students, the speech-language pathology assistant. And then there are a whole bunch of contracted. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed one. The parent liaison, community engagement, community and outreach, and website, which is something that several school committee members talked about. And in our own thinking, we're also thinking about support for parent liaison and communication. Then, as we go down the list, a whole series of how to support students, particularly students connected to the pandemic, continued work on writing, the SRSD professional development, continued math work. And what gets complicated about this is some of this work sits within the ESTER funds, and some of this work sits within other grants or operating budget. And as we get to some of the DEI work, that's actually getting supported from the Department of Justice grants. Tech supplies, dual enrollment, early college, hardware technology, and CTE. Then there's a little sort of additional narrative. And we, in Kate's. And we, in Kate's presentation to the finance subcommittee, she talked about adding a board certified behavior analyst and the speech role. The DEI work is largely going to continue to be supported by Stoke, the people that came and presented their report. And funding for that sits within the Department of Justice grant. Thinking about what we want to do with pre-K, potentially creating additional sections, potentially doing additional screening. The wellness role we've talked about is supported by Great Barrington for the moment. And we hope to hear soon about that next round of grants and our support. Small class, Zoe brought up the thing, and I didn't respond at the moment, but the costs of AP fees and how that's covered. So students who are eligible can get waivers. But there may be students who are in that sort of funny middle spot where they don't meet the external financial requirements of writing free checks for $100 each is a real burden. So we can do things there. For years, the high schools had this Joe Spartan Fund. And we use that to close gaps. The only thing that's a little hard about it is people have to self-identify that they're struggling and there's stigma and there's stuff attached to that. But hopefully, we can make it clearer. And then you don't have to necessarily go to the principal to say, I need some help on this. But you'd go to your crew leader or the math teacher you really like and share it with them, and then they could share it with the principal. So that... And then people had asked us what some of the guidelines were around the S R funds. So it's largely open-ended and we have lots of flexibility, but there are some priorities. So 20% has to be around lost instructional time and students in underrepresented subgroups. So low-income disabilities, English language learners, racial and ethnic minorities, students experiencing homelessness and children and youth in foster care, right? So that's targeted, but it's still pretty open-ended. Stuff connected to COVID, stuff connected to facilities, training and professional development on sanitizing and minimizing the spread of infectious diseases. I think we're really well-trained there, and I'm not recommending we invest any more resources in that. Supplies to sanitize and clean. Coordinating for potential future long-term closures. It pains me to say this, but at some point, there will be another variant or another virus or something. And we'll be much better prepared than we were. Educational technology, which aligns with what we're talking about. Student mental health services that very much aligns with what we've been talking about. And then summer supplemental after-school programs. So a big mouthful, but I wanted to share that I think there's some areas probably it makes sense to go into more detail and continue the discussion. But I feel largely we're on the same page. Any comments or thoughts on this emerging list?
I just have a procedural question. So how is this handled going forward? Will it be like, will something eventually come back to us for a formal vote of approval? Or is it totally in your guys' vote? And what is the timeline on it?
Yeah, well, the S R three funds are funny, because it's this year and the next two years after that. So whenever, and even though it's a short term, whenever you do long-term planning, the planning in the first year is always the most concrete. And then the needs change in the second and third year and you make shifts. So I don't think there has to be a formal vote on it. But I think it would be good if we revisited this a couple of times and reached a broad consensus. And this again is still sort of high level, but the S R three money is $1.2 million over three years. So I think a next step for us is to come back to the committee with, and to get it to you in advance of the meeting, so you have real time to digest it and look at it. But a recommendation for how this is costed and allocated over the next three years. And then have a discussion about, do the dollars represent what I hope are our shared goals and priorities, right? So then there's $80,000 in this and $40,000 in that. And a really good conversation would be, should it be 80 in this and 40 in that? Or should it be 60 in both?
Just to be clear, it's $1.2 million to be spent over three years.
Yeah, correct. So in my mind, and it's sort of simple about this, but that translates to $400,000 for each of three years, though in reality, if we spent more in one year, it'd be okay. And if we spent less than one year, it would be okay. And then probably, and it's sort of alluded to in the memo, you can glean it. It may make sense to, in a parallel way, know how much we're spending on DEI through the Department of Justice grant. So you can sort of see all these investments and express if you support them or they should be shifted. Does that work, Rich?
Yeah, no, no, that clarifies a lot. Thank you.
Cool. Anybody else? Okay. Let me then move on to my next thing. So I've got a little link crazy. And if you read my draft annual report, it's filled with links. And I think the big question I have for you is, right now, it's like four and a half pages, right? And one could have this very interactive experience and read the report and spend three hours clicking on each of the links and looking at the data yourself, which may in and of itself be enough, or it may be maddening. And what you might want is a page summary of each of the links. So you're reading a 20-page report, and then the links are there if you want to dig a level deeper. So I'm sure you took a look at it, and some of you might gone down into the rabbit hole of all the links. Does this do enough? Or do you want it to be one degree more granular? And I could write a more detail about the district improvement plan. And I could write more detail about each of the NCAS scores. And I could write more detail about the Stoke report. What do you think's valuable, both for the school committee and the community as a whole? Anyone?
Can you explain what this is used for and what the purpose of this is?
Yeah, so it's interesting, because in many ways, I do good work. And occasionally I excel, and in some places I struggle. And my Achilles heel in my superintendency has been around the annual report, right? So in little communities, like when I worked in Hancock, the town put together an annual report and I wrote a one-page memo. And that was that, and people were psyched about it. And Richmond's similar. In very large school districts, like the Boston Public Schools, there's probably a couple hundred-page report. Every year, we have the big budget book, and there's a lot of data in that. And that's a public explanation of our work and how we're using our resources. I think this is the other side of the coin to that, which is an opportunity to talk about what our goals are, where we've been successful, and where we have areas to grow. And this is why, and it's a state requirement, right? So what's in front of us meets the state requirement. But it could be four times as long if people wanted that and thought that was valuable. One of the hard things in putting it together this year was when we talked about doing it, we were talking about doing it in a more normal context. So there's a whole section of alternative indicators that we didn't really collect in the context of COVID. And what I hope this becomes is a sort of template where year after year, we don't keep changing what we're sharing, but we're able to look at longitudinal trends over time, including the alternative indicators. But we don't have as many alternative indicators. And then you have a document that's sort of top-heavy with traditional indicators that capture some of what we're doing, but not everything we're doing. Anyone else?
We don't hear any comments, we're going to assume that the links are...
I would vote for, not four times the size, but maybe one level down for granularity. If that's just me, I don't know what time or when it's time for public comment. But I would love to hear if there are any people on.
You can take public comment at any point. I haven't heard anyone. All you have to do is raise your hand, and I will recognize you.
I mean, before, I asked the question knowing that it could be one level more granular, right? So I think, I like that idea of it ending up being eight pages instead of five, but not 20.
Yeah, I mean, there were reports years ago that we actually sent out to a printer to get printed, because they were so large. And I'm not sure that's what we want to go back to.
No, I don't think so. So what I'll do is I'll go back and I'll expand it. And then I'll bring it back to you as the first iteration of it. And as we share it more broadly with the public, one of the best things about our three pens is if people can be very vocal, we'll get feedback and we'll make it even better for the year after.
I'm just wondering, in the additional district-generated indicators, the first section, student family and staff surveys. I know they might not have been district-generated, but I know for a fact that the high school, we take ungobly amounts of surveys. And I think for the fact of trying to share with the school committee, the public, sort of the experience of students and families, I think it should be really important that there is something there. So I don't know if we can waive the idea that it is coming from a district and hopefully including something from the schools.
Yeah, no, that's an easy one. And we can share links to that in a high level, a high level over here. We're also trying to get better about our surveys. I totally get the survey fatigue thing. And at some point, we're going to get to a thing where you probably will always take the prevention needs assessment survey, and it's a distinct thing, but it's only every two years. So in your whole school career, you take it in eighth, tenth, and twelfth grade. And then maybe we can get to the point of you do one survey a quarter, and we combine lots of different things we're asking, so it's not overwhelming. That may still feel like too much, but...
I mean, I personally enjoy taking surveys. I think there's like an abundance of information there, so not applicable is not like...
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, cool. All right, so let me move to the next thing. And this one's fairly straightforward. In your packet, there's updated revised job description for English as a Second Language teacher. For those of you that are looking at it, the new language is in red, the old language is struck out. I don't think there's anything particularly provocative. There's reference to two assessments that, or some standards and some assessments that didn't exist the last time this was written. So the WIDA stuff is a consortium of standards around English language learners. And the access is the state assessment to determine what level an English language learner is at. And then that's tied to the number of instructional hours they receive. This old version had the evaluation being done by the pupil personnel director. And we've not used that language in probably 10 years, maybe more, maybe 15 years. I think after that, it was the special education director. And now we're making a shift, having this sit with the Director of Learning and Teaching and John. So for the purposes of first discussion, would anybody like to make a motion to approve this?
I make a motion to approve the job description as English as a Second Language teacher.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Bill, second, I believe that was Molly.
Corey.
Corey, I'm sorry. She came from July last.
It was Maury.
Any discussion? Hearing none, world hold vote. Anne?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Bonnie?
Aye.
Holly?
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Corey?
Aye.
Rich?
Yes.
And aye, it's unanimous.
Okay, thank you for that. That's a good one. So the next thing was the continued discussion around the football co-op, specifically in reference to the Waldorf School. You have a memo in your packet from Christie and Carl sharing some pros and cons around that. And unfortunately, I don't have the memo right in front of me.
Yeah, it's in the email.
Okay. Christie, could you insert a comment on this slide? Could you just briefly summarize the pros and cons of it?
Yes. So I don't have a vote either, but I have. So we heard your questions last night, the last school committee meeting. And we did a little further investigation. We know already the pros are that our football team has a small number of students and could use some additional students to join the team, hence the reason for co-op in the first place. And that it would benefit our broader community in allowing more students to participate with our football team. There are the cons, which are the fact that Waldorf School is a small private school and is unlikely to be able to reciprocate offering any co-op programs to us, like some of our neighboring public schools are able to do. We also heard the concern that while the MIAA does approve private schools and joining the league, some folks might have a problem with us co-opping with a private school. And there's one that I'm forgetting. I don't know if anybody has a different one.
External students might keep students from starting. External student might keep...
Oh, yes, yes, yes. That if we had a student who was a top player coming to us from one of our co-op teams, it could prevent one of our own students from being started. it could prevent one of our own students from being a starter player on our.
And and also that Waldorf is unlikely to be able to reciprocate any co-op agreements all other teams that we have co-ops with host other teams, One X Crew, boys lacrosse, Lee girls lacrosse, and Mount Everett hockey.
So discussion or a motion?
Well, I originally made the motion to accept it. And after reflecting and listening to what Rich said, and also talking to former A D, Paul Gibbons, I'm not going to do that again. I'm against this request. I go back to the early 80s when a northern school brought in some kids and it caused a real shakeup in the athletic attitudes in the county. I just think this sets a precedent that could be used in another situation. I made the offhanded comment, which Mr. Gibbons immediately brought to my mind. I said, well, you know, they have a 610 center. Well, that was the case. And it did not help in regards to other schools and our relationships with other schools and the school that brought in these kids themselves, I think, put themselves at. There were a lot of criticism. And I don't think we need to get into that. I think let's go with what we have.
Anyone else? Do I have a moment?
Yes, this is Diane.
Yes, go ahead.
I think if there are kids that want to play and there's a school in our community, I consider it more about athletes and kids who don't have an opportunity to do that at their school. And so we have a number of schools that parents choose to send their kids to, whether they're private or co-op schools. And I think that when I think about this, I think mostly about kids and kids wanting to play. And it's this school being part of our community and those kids also being part of our community. And I would like to give them a chance to play on our team.
Thank you, Cory.
Peter, can I say something?
Cory had asked. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't think the comparison Bill made of Berkshire Berkshire Farm bringing in six a 610 center to play at Lennox High School back in the 70s is is a fair comparison. As as Diane said, we have, you know, a neighboring school that has a few kids that want to play football, and we have a football team that needs players. That's where this all this all started from. And if you guys want to vote against it, that's fine. But I I don't think bringing in, you know, past past stories of, you know, what Lennox did to to bring in those kids from Berkshire Farms is is really a fair comparison.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, I think all I was going to say was just if if we choose to vote against it, I I feel like the only point that we can really vote against is the private school piece, because I feel like some of the other cons quickly fall apart if we look at the idea that there's no reciprocation. I mean, we have our kids playing with Lee right now for lacrosse. I don't know that we're giving anything to Lee.
Swimming, swimming.
I also think we could think broader in terms of other things that Waldorf could potentially help us with. I know there's about an incredible program where they send kids to Cuba that could be of interest to some. I I just, I think we could think broader about the reciprocation piece. And the external student keeping our own students from starting again is already happening in the situations where we've already agreed to co-op. So I think if if we're deciding not to do it, we're deciding not to do it from everything that's been raised so far, basically because of the private school, we're just deciding not to mix. I don't know if there, I'm assuming there are no, but you know, liability and insurance issues, but I'm guessing that all has been taken care of. I'm assuming there are no cost issues. But but to me, kind of when I boil it down, that's that's what I keep coming back with, that that would really be the only reason. And then that's just a philosophical decision if we want to take that.
As I said last week, I agree with what Cory just said. That that is the deal breaker for me. I don't think we should be doing co-ops with private schools at all under any circumstance. I think this is a great private school. I think the great members are a community. I just philosophically cannot, under no circumstances would I ever vote for it. And on those grounds, I make a motion that we respectfully decline the request from the Waldorf School.
And a motion by Rich, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jason, discussion. And this is a fairly tough vote for me at least, because for one sport and one sport that we're hurting with numbers so that we can help them and they can help us. And since it's football and a lot of kids start from football and play, I'm not really worrying about who starts and who finishes, because we still don't have that many kids on the team. This was basketball, we're five kids and we we have to cut kids sometimes or kids play JVs, because if this isn't any room, be a different story. So this is this is not a simple, simple vote. So let's do a roll call and see where. Yes, go ahead.
Can I say one more thing?
Absolutely.
This is Diane. I think that any kid that wants to play, I could not look them in the face and say, sorry, you can't play on our team. We have a football team and you don't, and sorry, you're not allowed on our football team. In the same way that there are private leagues and soccer and that draws from kids at all of the schools. I think that we can't leave kids out if we can possibly include them. I think especially kids that want to want to participate and want to be part of the bigger program when they go to a small school. I just would really like to give kids that opportunity if they want to take us up on it, because I think we have a lot of good programs and I think we have a lot of great sports. And I would like that, I would like to share that with anybody who wants to be part of it.
Thank you, Diane. Yeah, it's it's tough, because one of the things I could say is that if you chose to go to a private school, there are many, many advantages, but there are some disadvantages because you don't have big sports teams at this school. But that's a choice you've made. But Diane and others have made a compelling argument also.
I'd like to know where do we know that these students who are who are asking to do this, are they from Massachusetts? Are they from other districts in other states that have football? And they've chosen to go to Waldorf, knowing it doesn't have football versus staying where they are where they couldn't have football? So to me, that's a question, where are they coming from? I understand in one situation or in one sense that that the kids are in the middle of this. But then, on the other hand, I think they made the decision to come to Waldorf, knowing that that was a situation. And I just worry about the repercussions of this for down the road. But we do it this for this one sport, now that we start getting into doing it for other sports that Waldorf doesn't have. And that could lead to potential problems that I pointed out. I I disagree with Paul. I think the the situation is comparable.
Yes.
Okay, so to be clear, when Waldorf approached us, they didn't approach us just specifically for football. They approached us to co-op in sports. And the reason that football is on the table is because the rules around co-op, and Charlie, you can jump in if you have more information to add. The rules around co-op for us are that we would only co-op with a team and can only co-op with a team if our team needs numbers. And so football is the only sport that we can actually make this proposal, and that's why this proposal is in front of you. If you approve it, there's still another step in this process, and that is that we have to go to the new league that was formed, the Pioneer Valley League that we are not part of. Well, it's not Pioneer Valley, it's just one. And they also have to give approval, even if you approve it. So this is just a piece of the process for co-op. And I don't know if Paul can understand, you know.
And the other the other piece is it's not a lifetime agreement. These things go before the league every year or every two years, and it's voted on. And Christie's right, football was the only one, the only sport where it applied by the the co-op rule, where host school needs players. And and there are kids that are interested in in joining as guests. So that was, that's why we only looked at football.
You know, how many students want to join football?
I think they've got three or four.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah.
Do you go ahead?
Oh, that just that they would have to fulfill whatever requirements we have around COVID or or any other health concern.
Yes, as well as user fees, concussion testing.
We're not waiving anything, but that's. And this is for next year, next year's football program.
Yeah, because there's two weeks left of this year.
We would, we would take it to the league this winter for approval for next fall.
And just two other clarifying things. The Waldorf School went through their part of the process with the MIAA. So from an MIAA perspective, they're approved to ask us to do this. But then whether this gets approved has to go back to the the local division. Steve, just one other.
I have a question. What is the grading system? What is the grading system and policy at the Waldorf High School?
Can you, Rich, can you state that again? He's asking what the.
What is the grading system and policy at the Waldorf High School? How do they grade and what type of scale? How often are their grades entered and reported?
Yeah, so this is interesting. So so I I think, and I can't speak to this in explicit detail, I I think they do narrative grades, but what you're referencing is the what's in our policy book around.
They can't satisfy our academic requirements with their grading policy. And it's unfair to have our kids have to meet certain rigorous academic requirements that are graded on an objective scale to qualify for sports. And every year we have kids who who miss to then let and in kids who are not subject to that same scale.
I I hear what you're saying, and I don't know if that's a overreach, because they have a internal set of procedures and policies. And and is are is their obligation just to meet their own standards? So if somebody's unsuccessful there, that's likely documented in some way, and that would make them ineligible. But just because predominantly we use a zero to 100 grading system, I don't know that we can compel them to do the same.
Aren't we even shifting away from?
Well, we're in the process of that potentially, yeah. So we have a motion. There's one last clarifying point. Can you describe the motion so people know what they're voting for or against? That is, if you vote yes, you're voting to decline Waldorf's request to co-op. And if you vote no, you're accepting their request. So it's one of those odd motions where you have to understand which way you're voting. So what is, Steve, what does actually the motion say? Do we have that?
My my motion, what my motion was to respectfully decline the request from Waldorf School to co-op in our football program.
It wasn't complicated. Okay, good. So roll call vote. Anne?
No.
Jason?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Diane?
No.
Cory?
No.
Rich?
Yes.
And I will vote no. So it is five to four that the motion passes, which means we will respectfully decline Waldorf's request to co-op. Shall we move ahead? Yeah, thank you. Sorry. So the next thing I I have to share, and this is a bit of good news, is our enrollment report. And and you have that in front of you. In in public schools, our enrollment goes up and down and changes throughout the year, but we use October 1st as the magic number. And and enrollment's important just in general, if you want to know how many kids we have. Enrollment's also important because of how the assessments happen to our member towns, right? And then and then those numbers drive the percentages in the eventual assessments. So last year, our enrollment was down a little in the context of COVID. Some people opted out, homeschool, did a whole host of other things. And and it was 1165. This year is up October 1st, our enrollment's 1,217. I just checked it today, and that's the official number, right? I just checked it today, and it's up four more students, so to 1221. It it'll likely continue to go up, maybe it'll dip a little and then go back up. But the 1217 is a 52 student increase from last year, or almost 4.6%. That's quite remarkable, because you read in the papers constantly the the narrative about declining enrollment in Berkshire County, declining enrollment in Berkshire County. A 4.6 increase is a is a big deal. So that's that's where that's where we are. There are lots of different versions of this in your in your packet. Last year was a strange year in that West Stockbridge and Stockbridge had the exact same assessment. And Sharon and I checked our math a dozen times, and it looked wrong, but it actually happened. This year, West Stockbridge is up a little bit and and Stockbridge is is down a little bit. So the Yeah, so so there, there we go.
Last year, we, or was it two years ago, I think, the tuition out from Farmington River caused us a budgetary trouble. Am I correct on that? I remember being in the finance committee meeting, and I think it was last year or the year, a number of students from Farmington River were not coming here, they were going to Lee instead. And it was at the transition where Farmington ends, and then they couldn't go to the middle school.
Correct, right, so.
Do we know how many students who have who did that have come back?
It looks like a lot. We're at 86 tuition students.
Yeah.
We're we're at 73 last year and 80 the year before that. We're at like a four-year high now. Yesterday was, last year was a historic low, and now we're right back up to a four or five-year high.
Yeah, and and the the one year that we lost a bunch of kids, and ironically, I think it was in part connected to the football program at Lee, that that a bunch of Farmington River kids had aspirations of playing football at Lee. Yeah, that's nice that that's sort of balanced out, okay. Peter, just from my own understanding of this, the last page is the October 1 enrollment summary. And the 2021 says total all students 1,201.
It includes tuitioned out. That includes kids who don't go here, right? They tuitioned out.
Right, that's that's.
Some of them are in the district, but not all the kids in the school.
Right, so so on the surface, it sounds like the growth I'm talking about didn't. Right, so, so on the surface, it sounds like the growth I'm talking about didn't happen, but it did.
I believe it.
Yeah, no. It, it looks, the way it's presented is a little. Okay, any other questions? So I, I'm really happy about this. We, we, we've seen some people move into the community. Great Barrington's overall population is up quite a bit. Some of those people are, are school age, so they're not all going to public schools. Some of them are going to private or independent schools. And, and the, the principals have done a good job of continuing to accept choice students throughout the year. Just today, we got two more who are, are moving from another state. So I, I think it's, it's good and I think people vote with their feet. And, and we have folks coming to our schools, obviously from our own communities, but also from many surrounding communities. And I think that really speaks well to what, what's going on in our schools, what teachers and parents and principals are doing, so.
Do we talk to the families that have opted to tuition out to find out why?
We, we've not done that in a while and it's. It, the, the, I, I think the tuition out are largely special education placements. I think what you're talking about are people who are choicing into other communities. And several years ago, we did a survey. We've not done one recently. On the list of all our priorities, it's sort of made to low. But it, that's something that maybe we should, should do it every three years to see what's, what's going on. It's a little challenging to track down all the folks, but, but we, we can try to do it. And, and sometimes we know as people are leaving, so we don't have to do another contact, right? Somebody's moving that has, like, is what it is. Somebody's sending their kid to Miss Halls because they got a great scholarship and it's, it's a neat opportunity. But, but then there are the ones like, I'm frustrated with the relationships with staff and getting out of here. That would be worth knowing, right? Or, or there's a pattern of bullying in a particular grade, right? That would be another good one to know about.
Well, it's only, it has only 26 kids this year.
The tuition out is largely special education.
Right, so, so it, it would be, it would be the choice students, so.
No, we get that. We don't get that report for the year until December. Okay.
Yeah.
Peter up.
Yeah, Rich, come on.
I know, I mean, we talked about the tuition numbers, but the tuition in numbers are going up dramatically too over the last four years. Do you have any sense as to what the, is there any trends in where those kids are coming from? And we have 20 more kids this year. We had 20 more kids a year before and 20 more kids, and we're like almost a 100 kids over four years.
Yeah.
Like where are, are the, the kids that are coming in? I know we've had kids, the new kids are coming in. Where are they coming from? Is there any specific trends?
Well, I mean, the, the tuition kids obviously come from Richmond, Otis and Sanders.
No, I'm talking about the school choice.
Yeah, so we, we'll share, we, we don't have that report right now, right? Because it, it gets run against this other stuff, but, but we'll, we'll share it in maybe two meetings. Lots from our, the towns, the five towns south of us, right? From, from what compose this southern Berkshire. So lots from each of their member towns. Lots from Lee, some from Lenox, some from Pittsfield. And, and that's really the, the bulk of it. We have in the past had students from Williamstown. It's a pretty drive, but it's a long drive to, to Williamstown. We've had people from Taland.
Southfield?
Southfield, yes, Southfield. And they're like hamlets of, of the five towns south of us. But in the meeting in December, you'll share it all. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll look at it.
There is data. Yeah, it's right on the second page.
Second page.
Lee, Lee, Lee with 60.
You don't have the out numbers because that's not available yet.
Correct.
That's right.
That really tells.
Right, so.
Oh, I missed that. I said, yeah. But my, my specific question was not just the totals. Is, we seem to be having this big increase over the last couple of years in school, or a steady increase every year. Like, is that increase representing coming from a certain place? I can, and I could talk to you offline with Sharon or Peter if there's a way to call that out or not.
Yeah, we, we, we can look at it. I mean, what's been interesting, and I know Richmond intimately because I've worked there too. Their, their numbers have dipped for a while. Last year's class was bigger. The next few classes are going to be a little smaller. And, and the Richmond students really choose between Monument, Lenox and the two schools in, in Pittsfield. But I think for the people who don't have this in, in front of them, I'll just, the, the biggest one is Lee. So 60 total students are coming from Lee, 34 from Egarmont. 37 from Pittsfield. 20 from Sheffield. And then I think that the balance, oh, I missed one, sorry. Yeah, 33 from Mill River, 14 from New Marlboro. And then most of the rest of the communities are each in the, in the 10 or fewer range.
It's Monterey National.
Sorry, yeah, that's, you should do it with the ruler. Okay, so, so that's where on that, that's generally good news. Let me shift now, unless there are any more questions about that, to COVID-19 and tell you a little bit about what's going on there. So the seven-day case count per 100,000 is 236. That's going in the wrong direction, right? So not, maybe the last meeting it was 160. So it's up 18%. Wear your mask, get vaccinated and wash your hands, right? The, the positivity rate is 3.6, which is high. But the infection rate I think is 1.1%. And sort of, as Ann and I went for a million times last year, below one is, is where you want to be. So we, we've got some, some work to do. We're waiting on this week's pool testing and probably Becky Donovan's on the call and we'll announce it in a second. But the, we had a few positive cases this week. At the elementary school, I think there were two. At the high school, there was one. And, and we'll, we'll see the, the rest of the results shortly. So we continue to do our work on this. I think since we last met, the commissioner announced that the mask mandate is continuing through January 15th. After the winter break and, and the holidays. And we had that whole big conversation about if, if you hit the 80% threshold, you could stop wearing masks. If, if we asked the commissioner to do it. And then if you voted to do it, we've hit that threshold at the high school. But the requirement is for vaccinated people to not, or the, the, i- i- if you go down that path of not wearing masks. Unvaccinated people need to continue to wear masks. And from a separation enforcement management thing, that's a nightmare. And, and I'd rather everybody wear masks till we got to a threshold where we didn't have to wear masks. Than to, to just have the 20 or 10% of people not wear masks. So that's what's going on with that. A, a, any questions about COVID itself? Okay, so now let me move on to the vaccine mandate. And, and even since I pulled together this information, it's changed a little bit. As I understand it, and I shared this in the packet, there are really two approaches. And one approach is what the Cambridge schools did. And another approach is what the Amer schools did. And then there's like the Belzer Town approach, which is sort of in the middle. So what they did in Cambridge was the school committee itself made a motion that all age eligible, age eligible students must be vaccinated. But failure to be vaccinated won't result in exclusion from school. And, and this is sort of the right versus the opportunity argument and schools are right. So they clearly got legal advice to, to not exclude anybody from school because it's setting yourself up for a lawsuit, right? But, but the second part of it is if unvaccinated students will not be allowed, or it's sort of this funny negative thing. No unvaccinated students will be allowed to participate in athletics, clubs, intramural sports, student government, after-school, visual and performing arts, all school clubs that meet of the day or school-sponsored events, right? And this is in some ways similar to our first step around pool testing. So, so that's one approach and that's actually the one that I would favor or recommend. The second approach is, is really interesting and this is what they did in Amherst. And while the schools did this, the driving force on this one was the Amherst Department of Public Health. So the Amherst Department of Public Health added the COVID vaccination to the list of mandatory vaccines that all students get in that community. So actually, the school committee didn't vote to do it. The Department of Public Health did. And, and that's a really interesting way to do it. I reached out to, because the schools, the, we're in Stockbridge now. The schools sit in Great Barrington. I reached out to the health agent and then I reached out to the chair of the, the Board of Health in Great Barrington. Had a really nice conversation with them. He, he was very thoughtful and invited us, or some number of us to a Great Barrington, they're meeting right now at the same time, but to one of their meetings or to do a joint meeting or something. And, and talk about it. Interestingly, many communities, including the tri-tans, so Stockbridge, Lenox and Lee have a mask mandate. So if you go across the street to Elm Street to get a sandwich, you have to wear a mask. But Great Barrington doesn't have a mask mandate. And, and it appears it's sort of the will of that board to not do that. So I don't know the likelihood of going to the Great Barrington Board of Health and getting them to do a vaccine mandate when they've not even done a mask mandate, right? But, but I'm, I'm just speculating. I shouldn't do that. We should have a meeting with them and, and talk to them about it. So these are two possibilities. I think what, what Belzer Town did, which is sort of in the middle, is they just said, if you want to participate in extracurriculars or do anything, you need to be vaccinated. So one other thing that's important, we learned today, and I'll be sending out a note tomorrow, that vaccine clinics for the five to 11-year-olds are going to start next week at Du Bois. So one will be on the, or the first one will be at Du Bois on the 13th of November. Followed by another one on the 4th of December. We don't know the timing for that yet. That's still being worked out. And, and apparently people are able to get vaccinated now at several other sites, hospitals, pediatrician offices and other things. So just more information as you potentially might move to this. And, and I think that's why the language is all eligible students must be vaccinated. So we don't have a lot of them, but, but we do have some three and four-year-olds. And in the current structure, they would not be eligible, but everybody five and up is now eligible.
It would be my recommendation that this be referred to the policy subcommittee to come back with a recommendation. That that would be, that would be the committee that would do policy here. And I don't know that we're going to get this done right away anyways, because I think public input's important.
Yeah, no, agreed. And I just, I shared these two because.
I appreciate that.
When you asked last.
Right, you guys have implied you were trying to get us to vote tonight. I think you should put a policy in.
Currently, the, the requirements that kids have in shots and needles and stuff is a state requirement.
No, that's in our policies.
It, it's, I think it's both. So I, I think it's a state requirement that's backstopped by the local Board of Health and our own policies.
Because kids can be excluded from school for not having immunization, I believe.
I, I think Massachusetts is known for the huge loophole of the religious exemption. And, and many people use that. And, and I think there's a, a strong effort to narrow that.
Right, but families don't know that have had their kids excluded from school because they didn't have immunization records. They had to find a way to re-immunize.
Yeah.
I mean, it's been used as a reason that kids could not attend school. I don't know where that story came from. Is that the state authority? Is that, like, the school committee authority?
Yeah, this is, this is a little new to me and I can do some more research. And I, Steve, I like the recommendation of policy going into it. This is another one that, that is worth talking with the school district's attorney about. Julian?
Yeah, I just, I had that question as well, but I have two questions. My first one, like procedurally, because this is, I think, the second or third time that this has been on the agenda, right? So I think we can agree that there has been time for public comment and we have heard none.
I disagree with you.
Okay, okay. I, I like and I understand sort of the intent to sort of send it to the policy subcommittee. I just wonder, is there a way that there can be a vote of intent tonight by the school committee?
Absolutely not.
So there's, so.
Now, this is a very long process that's very controversial. And we need to make sure we have everything in order before we take the vote. I'd be more than glad to sit here all night and hear school committee and public comment. But I really, you know, this is just scratching the surface. This, this will be, whatever we decide to do, if we decide to do a vaccination mandate, it'll be very controversial among many people. So we really want to make sure we've done our homework. And part of me says, really, this is going to be, in fact, could be effective for next school year.
I mean, that, that's what they did in Los Angeles. They voted to do something, I, I think, effective September 1.
2022.
So I mean, that, that may not happen. It may be for the spring or we may not take any action on it. But this, this, we, I would say when we make a decision, we will, when we decide to make a decision, the meeting before that will probably have some advertising for public input to make sure that.
Well, and send a, a potential draft policy out two weeks in advance. Well, and send a a potential draft policy out two weeks in advance with a notice that it's going to be discussed and voted on, at such and such day.
And and if if you remember, school committee does, that when the pandemic first hit, and there was a lot of controversy, we had two hundred and seventy-some odd people on a Zoom meeting.
Right, yeah.
So this is, this likely will have that type of attendance at our meeting or something. And I think we need to take this seriously, I think Peter's right, we need to get legal advice. If if a school committee member wanted to make a motion tonight, that's possible to do, but I would highly discourage it.
And my second question is, can you just explain the exclusion from school? Because the way I'm reading it is, is that if it will not result in exclusion from school, they would be able to go to school if not vaccinated and simply not be able to participate in extracurriculars?
Correct, right, a- a- and and that's, that's this thing that you a right to, and there's all different lines here about this, right, but a a fair and appropriate public education is a right, so you can't, or or the recommendation is you don't exclude people from that, even if they're not vaccinated because it's violating their rights. So you could argue with not being vaccinated, they're, they're impacting their, their peers.
Well, just to, just to clarify, our current policy, JLCB sets, students entering school for the first time, whether kindergarten or through transfer from another school system, will be required to present a physician's certificate attesting to immunize, immunization against diphtheria, whooping calf, polyitis, tetinitis, measles, and such other communicable diseases as may be specified from time to time by the Department of Public Health. The only exception to this requirement will be made on receipt of a written statement from a doctor that immunization would not be in the best interest of the child, or by the student's parents or or guardian stating that vaccination or immunization is contrary to the religious belief of the student or parent. So to 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 put out there that this is some kind of novel legal or public health thing is just simply false. We are doing this now for a bunch of diseases I've never heard of, while seven hundred and fifty thousand people have died in this country from the disease we're talking about. So people gotta gotta buck up and start making decisions, but to couch this in some kind of bureaucratic mystery is, is, is misinforming the public.
So a couple answers to that, one, Rich, thank you, because that tells us it's a Department of Public Health that ultimately requires those immunizations, and we just have
No, we, we voted on the ones that were listed there and said, and other ones that the Department of Public Health may add to it.
I care to you, though, that we will look it up, but state law, I'm sure from the DVA requires that, that's, but we we will do that. The other thing to say is, Rich, what, we're in novel times, and and you know that, and your argument lies in the fact that this is a political discussion as well as the safety of our students. And on top of that, what really marries the water is all of these vaccinations are under what's called an EUA, Emergency Use Authorization. None of the vaccinations that you mentioned are, and that scares the heck out of some people, not me, and that makes it more controversial. And I could argue with you that this vaccine is one of the highly, most tested drugs in the history of the world because of the number of people who've gotten it, but it is still under an EUA.
It does say in the Amherst policy that they are adding it to the list of fully approved by the A- the FDA, so I do believe that it has been fully approved.
It is under EUA.
Pfizer and Moderna are fully approved now.
They, but it started off under an EUA.
I think the Pfizer twelve is still an EUA.
Pfizer twelve is still an EUA, and that, and that's, you know, it'll eventually come through, like the other ones have, but it's just the road that it's taken and the speed that it's come has scared some people.
Corey?
Can you just remind us what happened last year with the flu vaccine?
Well, this is interesting, right? Because like, the, i- initially, the, there was a mandate from the state that everybody be vaccinated, and the nurses worked extraordinarily hard to get that vaccination rate high, and it was way over ninety percent, and at the last minute, the requirement got waived, and, and and there was some rationale about, now we need to focus on COVID and and not that, and they, they backed off on that.
And there was no attempt to revisit that this year.
By the state, no.
By the state, and do we have any sense that the state is going to move this issue forward?
The, the mantra that we continue to hear is Massachusetts is about local control, and and will give you guidance, but it's up to the communities. And and many cases, I love and appreciate that, and, and that there are three hundred and fifty-one communities having the same discussion, and, and, and we could be talking about learning, and and people with, with deeper content knowledge and and medical understandings might be able to to move this better and more deliberately, does pain me some.
I do think it's important that when those clinics are set, that there was a ton of publicity through the schools. I was really disappointed, there was a flu clinic on Tuesday, and I think lots and lots of parents I've talked to never even knew that it happened. It was at Du Bois.
Well, I'll, I'll do, it's funny, I was looking at something today, they, they put up some street signs in Hiscatonic, and somebody took a picture of it, and there are like four signs in a row. Going forward on this, I I will do so much average that people will complain about it.
Just shows that the school is behind getting these vaccines and that
Yeah, I I I do have a a good letter to go tomorrow about the, the two COVID clinics, and then I'll, I'll follow up with, with repeated phone calls.
And another piece would be that there's the adult vaccine, the twelve-years-and-up vaccine available for families, and, well, a lot of kids might have turned twelve recently, and would be, would be the optimal to get the, you know, they're not going to get the younger kid vaccine, so it would be good to have a whole vaccine available, or all the kids from kindergarten through.
Yeah, i- it's, it's my understanding that the clinics will have votes and and try to, to catch, e- 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 even if a seven-year-old goes, if a parent or somebody else, an older sibling, to get vaccinated, definitely take care of that.
There's still a lot of ways for twelve and up to get vaccinated now, I think part of that is why.
There are parents who want it done at the school.
Yeah, but if you want it done at the school, this is your chance, and you're right, there's no reason we can't just advertise the heck out of it and hope that our vaccination rates are very high to begin with.
Well, and the really good news is the, the seventh through twelfth grade rate is above eighty percent and and getting higher. I think what's going to get interesting is what happens over time, right? So most of the youth were vaccinated within the last five months, but as people start getting to seven, eight, nine months, then, then there's the, the boosters for that, right?
Well, not yet, like, they're not working many boosters for
For everyone, right.
Certainly for some people.
Some of us are older folks, right?
Yeah. Yes, for teachers, schools are doing this, but not for eighteen-year-olds.
Right, right. Okay, so when we refer to policy, we'll schedule a policy meeting between now and our next school committee meeting, a- a- and hopefully, out of that, we also reach out in some way to the Great Barrington Department of Public
Yeah, I would hope we're able to come back to everyone's point with some sort of policy by the December meetings, and and that's, and then we can have a good discussion about
Right, but I don't see us voting on anything at the next meeting in two weeks, but but maybe we have a, a draft to share, and then a whole giant public invite notification.
Right.
And then we plan a light agenda where we talk
I mean, we could have a public discussion now, but I think it's better to have one based on a policy that the policy subcommittees recommend.
This may be one of those things that warrants like its own standalone meeting, which we've done on some, like, real important things before.
I agree with you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I I was just wondering if we can sort of put some sort of timeline in place and set a date sometime into December, that we will hold a public hearing based on this, with the hope of having a policy for then and a vote.
You're going to think I'm a grumpy old man, and I like the idea, but having any sort of public meeting in the last two weeks of December is opening yourselves up to problems because everyone's either away or celebrating the holidays, and and you don't get a representation, but we can try.
Yeah, I mean, if they, if they care so much about vaccines, I would hope that they put their vacation plans aside.
Well, we are Zooming, so you can Zoom anywhere in the world, that's, that is a good point.
Maybe, Peter, something would be helpful, I know you've explained it many times before, but explain how vaccinated kids verse un, are treated as opposed to unvaccinated kids when they find themselves in a close contact or a pool testing situation.
Yeah, and and again, like, I should have my little memo about this so I can articulate it perfectly, but a- and principles weigh in on this if I, if I miss step. If, if somebody's vaccinated and they're perceived to be a close contact, then they're able, if they're asymptomatic, to participate in the test and stay protocol so they can still attend school and be tested. If, if somebody is unvaccinated, then, then, and they're perceived to be a close contact, then they're on the path of quarantine for ten days. Okay, Kristy's going to correct me.
If someone is vaccinated and identified as a close contact, they are informed that they should monitor for symptoms, and they proceed as normal, they participate in school and have to be masked. If they are unvaccinated, they are offered the opportunity to participate in tests instead, and they have to come into school, test, if the test is negative, then there's no symptoms, they're allowed to stay in school masked, they have to eat lunch in a separate location because when they're unmasked, they have to be socially distanced.
Okay. But but i- in practice, the unvaccinated folks are at risk for, a greater risk for a ten-day quarantine than the vaccinated folks, right? So it's good to be vaccinated because it's good to be vaccinated, and it's also good to be vaccinated because if you have three children and it, it goes through your whole house, your whole family could miss a month of school. Okay, Rich, does that help?
Yeah, I mean, the whole point of the vaccination, one of the major vaccination things is that we know we're going to have COVID around, but it allows things not to get disrupted, and it keeps kids in school. Vaccinated kids keep kids in school, which is been the thing we've been talking about for two years now.
Right, absolutely right. Okay, well, thank you on that. So I'm going to shift gears a little bit. Early in the fall, you all, or maybe late summer, you improved, approved an instructional coach role, and and we've had that advertised for quite a while. We in total received four applicants, one of them withdrew. There, there are people in the pool that that I'm excited about, but I'm not totally comfortable moving forward right now, so I know folks are wondering where we are with that. I'm exploring, because it's also sort of bad form to pull people out of other school districts in the middle of the year, because then they can't fill the role, and ourselves, we're struggling with staffing. I'm, I'm exploring the possibility of reposting it in February for next year so we could get somebody with lots of advanced notice, and I think that'll also increase the candidate pool, and then filling the role with contracted service or a consultant, so that it's not pulling an existing person out of a school, but somebody who does a few hours a week in each of several schools to to potentially do this. The other role could be a retired person to work as a, an instructional coach. Questions about that, that's really largely an update? Anyone? One other thing, you know, we do a lot of stuff with the Great Schools Partnership, so there are now three folks from there who are working with us. Dan Lieber is probably the one that that people know the most. They've been giving us some advice around how to define a role, which I think will be helpful, so if we bring in a consultant to do the work in the short term, not only will they do the work and model it, but they'll help us set up the position in a way so when we bring somebody on, that person can be more successful. Okay, so I think that's that's it for me, and back to Steve.
Subcommittee reports policy is not met, they will. Jason, buildings and grounds?
Um, yeah, we met on October twenty-sixth, just had one topic, high school extraordinary funds. We were fortunate to have Kristy present to us her thoughts and plans on how to spend that money if it's in the budget. So briefly, Kristy, do you want me to sum it up for you?
You could, that'd be wonderful.
Okay. Basically, the use of space in the academic areas has been great, and there's really no more minor alloy improvement projects left for the classrooms, we're about as good as we can get, unless we put some serious money that we don't have going forward, so, which is a good thing, you know, which, the money that we've used these last five or six years has really been great in updating those classrooms. So the next step, as far as, you know, the, the majority of the classrooms, academic rooms, et cetera, is starting to replace some of the furniture. There's still a lot of sled desks there, get rid of those, and there's new trapezoid desks that are, I guess, a lot better for multiple reasons, some more whiteboards, tablets, et cetera. So that's number one. Number two, the bathrooms, the the northeast bathroom, which is on the bus loading platform, closest to the fields that get used for sporting events, as well as basically the A-link students, you know, those are obviously in horrible shape, and they need a facelift, so, you know, she proposed that as well. The other thing was auditorium seating, it's gotten past the point of no return, and some, a lot of the seating is unacceptable at this point, so I know Steve Soul said about five years ago, it was about a hundred and twenty thousand dollar range estimate to do them all. Obviously, that's probably doubled or tripled now, considering where our economy is since then, but at least to get a, a portion to start on that, to replace some of those, especially the ones that are, you know, can't be used anymore, just unacceptable. So that was another portion of the, the money that she proposed. And the last thing was the outdoor classroom space to, right now, I mean, basically, we just have a bunch of wooden tables out there, but to have something more formal, almost like a curved dugout into the, excavated into the earth, and almost like a performance venue, but more of a
Amphitheater.
Yeah, amphitheater kind of look, to be used. So those are really the, before main points she touched on. Anybody else there want to add anything, or anything I forgot?
Anything else, Kristen?
I know that was our, that was our only topic on the session.
Was there seating, seating in hallways or something, seating like to make alcoves or?
The library bench?
So the
Yeah, library, yeah, I think the library bench is
Across from the library, there's lockers, and that's a place where we talked about, like, we did the back alcove, right outside of the gymnasium, and then outside of the auditorium was another area that we thought we could actually benefit from having some seating there, and the lockers haven't been used.
So wasn't that one of the other things?
Yeah, well, Steve said that he could get that up as a budget. That would be necessary for the extraordinary funds. He thought these these guys could do it in in-house and part of his regular budget, so. And then also, he he touched on the early childhood, moving to chapter 74. So we need to update that. But again, that's gonna be grant funded. It's not necessary to use this these specific funds. That's kind of why it comes up.
Thanks, Chris. Superheadings evaluation? Technology? We did need, you want?
Yeah, no, I'll talk about it. So we we had a nice, a really nice meeting. And we put together a bunch of thoughtful slides that I can share with, I'll put it in the the folder for everything. He's working hard in like five different areas. So network stuff and and continuing to update devices. Also, it's a complex software that should let people learn and and the rest of us do do our jobs better. The the refresh cycle is is moving ahead. There was a real, and I think this was going into the pandemic. Everybody ordered everything under the sun and and Chromebooks took, like that combined with the shipping issues, Chromebooks took six months to a, almost a year to get. And and we've gotten now finally a lot of the stuff we ordered and ordering more stuff and 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 getting that. Some discussion about. They're doing a lot on sort of the hardware and network side of things. And in individual buildings, there are tech teams that are working really hard around supporting technology shifts and and innovation. But a a thing to think about on our list of opportunities is is, again, sort of more support and and professional development and and connections around technology. Did Steve dig miss anything?
I don't think so. It was a good meeting.
Yeah, and it was nice because we hadn't had one in a little while.
Rich, finance?
Yeah, we met actually before this meeting tonight and reviewed the kind of overview summary of the high school and the elementary school, both which were very well done and informative. Nothing dramatically earth shattering from a financial budgetary impact. Christie did give us a good update on where they're going with the CVTE program kind of post-COVID. We shouldn't, you know, expect some budgetary impacts there, but I think it'll it'll be well done. So we're meeting again, I forget what the specific date is, in a couple of weeks. But we should be moving more into nuts and bolts budget composition stuff now, so.
Next one's at 5 o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
District consolidation sharing is not met. Anything, very short personnel report, anything you want? I like.
No.
Any old or new business before the committee?
Can I, I I know it's late, but I've I've been thinking about this. I was interviewed this morning by a student at Montyver Mountain who's writing for Maroon Tribute. The whatever the name of the newspaper is. For journalism, and he wanted me to deal with the school rehabilitation and renovation project. And I gave him my insight on it. And I I want to know, where are we on getting on the road to the high school project? I know we haven't heard from the MSBA, but we had a meeting in last spring in which we talked about, we want to be ready to go when the MSBA comes down with either a yes or a no. Either way, we want to be on the road. So I'd like to know, where are we in regards to looking at consultants? Are we even to that point? It's, I know with COVID and and I understand why, if we haven't gotten there, I I think I understand it. But it came up that we're gonna return Great Barrington $400,000 from E and D surplus, over $400,000 according to Sharon's report. And I talked to somebody this morning and said, there's some good use of that money to be put aside for a high school project and that the towns should start preparing for this. So I I don't know whether this is.
We'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting. It's not, that's not on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm I'm happy to talk about it.
Good, okay, absolutely.
Everybody, everyone should read the vote we took last May and and I think it's pretty self-explanatory. I'd love to talk about it at the next meeting too, but if I would also be open to another joint finance committee, Buildings and Grounds meeting on that specific topic if people wanted it.
Sounds good, Rich.
Yep.
Anyone else? Any public comment? Go ahead.
Thank you. I was wondering how easy it is or what the process is to look at an existing contract. It's come up in some of the inclusion work that we, it would be helpful to see what the contract between the district and Stowe Collective actually said.
I think it's a public.
It's a public document.
I want documents.
Yeah, just make a request to the Superintendent's office.
Okay, is there an official form or can I just?
You're asking me. I'll send it to you tomorrow.
Okay, great. I'll show you an email, Peter. I would love to see that contract. Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else? By unanimous consent, we are adjourned.